Okay. All right, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to call the August 17, 2020 Crest Hill City Council meeting to order. If everyone would please rise for the pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Ray Solomon.
Here.
Glenn Conklin.
Present.
Scott Dyke.
Here.
John Frichay.
Here.
Barbara Scoler.
Here.
Claudia Gazal.
Here.
Tina Oberlin.
Present.
Marco Cola di Pietro.
Here.
Nate Albert.
Here.
Joe Kupel.
Here.
Okay, you have before you the minutes of the August 3, 2020 Crest Hill City Council meeting. Motion would be in order?
So moved.
Second.
We have motion by Alderman Scoler, seconded by Alderman Cola di Pietro. Questions or comments in regards to the approval of the minutes of the August 3, 2020 meeting. Roll call, please.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Upstate.
Joe Kupel?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
John Frichay?
Yes.
Barbara Scoler?
Yes.
Marco Cola di Pietro?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, we do not have a business promotion this evening, but instead we are going to go, I would ask the councils concurrence to deviate to the mayor's report for a presentation of the GFOA award, and I would like to invite our auditors, Dave Meyer and Katie Napier, to the podium.
Hi, good evening, and thanks for having us out. I'm gonna kinda just stand off to the side and hold the award while Katie says a few words, and congratulations, though, to the city again on a fine job of presenting the financial information, and I'll let Katie take over.
This is the award that you got. I'm kinda just standing here.
You'll be Vanna White.
All right. The GFOA, or Government Finance Officers Association, established the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting Program, or the CAFR program, in 1945 to encourage and assist the state and local governments to go beyond the minimum requirements of generally accepted accounting principles, to prepare comprehensive annual financial reports that evidence the spirit of transparency and full disclosure, and then to recognize individual governments that succeed in achieving that goal. Each CAFR is reviewed using a checklist designed to determine compliance with both generally accepted accounting principles, GAAP, and program policy as established by the GFOA's Special Review Executive Committee and the GFOA Executive Board. In 2018, which is the most current stats available, there was 4,354 total awards in the nation. 2,117 of those were municipalities, Crest Hill being one. So we'll present to you the Government Finance Officers Association Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting, presented to the mayor, city council, and management of the city of Crest Hill.
And Ashley. Why isn't one of them?
Well, thank you. First of all, this is the fifth year in a row now that we have got this most prestigious award. It puts us in a class that we should all be proud of. I certainly want to offer my gratitude and my congratulations to our treasurer Glenn Conklin, our finance supervisor Ashley Motica, all of our city staff, and all the city council for all the hard work that everybody has done for us to get this award for the past five years. So I'm very proud of this. Our residents should be very proud of the fact that we have received this award for five years. We are in an elite group now, and, you know, I look forward for this to be happening every year because we did a tremendous turnaround of our finances in the city of Crest Hill. Thank you to our auditors, Dave, Katie, and the group that were here for a week back in, I believe it was July. Everything went smoothly, Ashley and everybody in the treasurer's office, everything went smooth, too. So with that, I will let Ashley say a few words, and then Glenn, if you would like to speak a few words.
Glenn, you should be up there. You're the treasurer. Get up there.
So just in addition to what Ray had already said, I just want to also send a sincere thank you to not only the auditors, as you mentioned previously, but also to the staff in the finance department. Without them, I would say I don't know that I could handle what I do on a regular basis, so also management as well. Management's worked fantastic throughout the audit process, and obviously the mayor and council as well. So overall, we're looking to achieve this for many more years to come, and I just want to thank everybody that was, that took part in this.
Glenn? Well, thank you. Anybody from city council?
I'd just like to congratulate Glenn for his oversight, and Ashley for you and your staff for doing a great job.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
You guys have a good night. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, going back to the agenda to our city administrator Heather McGuire. Good evening, Heather.
Good evening, mayor and council. I do not have any agenda items for consideration this evening due to last week's work session being canceled. In light of that, we will be having a work session next week on the 24th. Additional topics are still being finalized, but we will likely have one on the 31st as well to catch up from the work session that we did not have. The informational report is on file. Just wanted to quickly touch on the storm damage. I know the director of public works will go into a little bit more detail. I just did want to say that crews have been working tirelessly, so I just wanted to formally thank the public works department for everything that they are doing, have done, and continue to do throughout the city to try to get everything cleaned up. I know it's been a bit of a process, a bit frustrating, and a bit exhausting for everybody. I know there was a lot of damage, not only in Crest Hill but in the surrounding areas, so we are very appreciative of what they are doing. We are still going through the city to keep everything moving in terms of cleanup. Staff will be picking up branches, but like I said, I don't want to steal too much thunder from the director of public work, so with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions this evening.
Questions of city administrator?
Yeah, I have one. I guess I'm just kind of puzzled. We built the brand-new facility on the east side of town with office space and all the, we've paid money for all the phone lines and all this and all that, and then when I got my little tour, I see that now our wastewater gentleman and Ada are now at the public works building, and it doesn't make a lot of sense to me. Maybe somebody could explain it.
Sure. Operationally, while we're trying to still get all the departments sort of working together and have some new staff in place, it made sense for the time being with the extra offices we had at the public works building to temporarily move those two people down to the, or to the new building to try to get some continuity between the two departments. There will always be that ability for them to move back. We only transferred the phone lines down from the public works building. Right now, we can easily transfer those back and easily move that staff back, but right now it was operationally to try to get everybody working together and on the same page. It made more sense that way.
So what are we doing with that building down there?
Right now, we still do have our water treatment operators working out of that building as well as our crew leader, so it freed up some office space for our crew leader that was sort of working out of a copy closet before, so he can still work out of there. But right now, our, just our general labor staff is still working out there.
Yes, I just don't understand how the man in charge of it's not working at one of the facilities. It just, it puzzles me, I guess. Maybe I just don't understand, but...
He is still, he is still checking in. Obviously, we do have a crew leader down there. He is still checking in with his staff very often, but again, just to try to get everybody to have some continuity between the departments, so we didn't lose that completely for the time being. It made more sense.
Any other questions?
Yeah. Where are we at with 1917 Berry Circle?
I can give you an update on that. I don't want to do that in open session, but I'm happy to do that privately.
All right, and a couple of other properties, 1919 Broadway, and then 1724 Broadway, I believe it is. That's the house that caught fire down there. I don't know if it's 24 or 22, it's somewhere around there. It's right across from 23, so I'm guessing, because there's no address on it, but I'll...
Yep, I'm happy to follow up on the last two with the building department to see what's going on with those. The first one, just due to it being a litigation matter, I'd rather update privately on that one.
Okay.
Anyone else?
I have a question or consideration. So like, we talked today, it's still a quarter of the city that it's been clean, and by driving by, like, a lot of those branches have started to dry, and it's gonna start making more mess, and it seems like it's gonna be probably another week or two minimum from the amount of branches. Is there any way maybe we should consider, like, hiring a company, like, for a couple days just to get the city clean up a little bit and free?
Sure, we actually have reached out to companies, and right now their priority is getting trees that have fallen on structures that are life safety issues out. There is basically no available help right now. Everybody is sort of struggling a little bit to try to clean up with the intense amount of damage that happened over the last couple weeks, so unfortunately, the contractors that do this type of work, they're not available because they're helping private homeowners that have structural issues, and we have crews working out there. They are staying beyond the extended workday. We also had them out on Saturdays, so we are working as often as possible with as much crew as we can to try to get everything cleared out as quick as possible.
Even like somebody with the shred truck, like shred, like have you reached out to local, like?
A chipper, you mean?
Yeah.
That's the issue, is that they're using their own equipment for those structural issues. So lumber sacks, for example, I know Mark had a conversation with last week. He said he's completely buried with private homeowners' issues right now that, again, are those structural life safety issues, and he said it is gonna be a long time before he could get to us to assist us. So that's why we're dedicating basically full staff on both sides, water, wastewater, as well as our street department minus, you know, the staff necessary to operate those day-to-day issues to continue picking up. So we are through about a quarter of the city right now. I know a second crew went through the west side, and I'll let Tom sort of answer some more questions on that, but a second crew went through the west side of the city to pick up some of the smaller damaged areas. The hardest hit seems to be Ward 1 and more towards the east side of the city, so that's taking a little bit more time because of the size of a lot of the trees that fell.
Yeah, some of them are huge.
Correct, they are, and they are working as quickly as possible. You know, we're trying to be strategic about it, so we're trying to make an initial pass, and then there will be a second pass made once we are able to get through, at least hit every street once.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Heather. Moving on, public works department, our director of public works, Tom Meggs. Good evening, Tom.
Good evening, mayor and council. I have nothing on the agenda this evening, but as mentioned earlier, I'll touch briefly on the storm response and answer any additional questions there might be. As the storm came through last Monday evening, we were monitoring to see what was going to be affecting Crest Hill, and immediately as the storm subsided, we had a couple of crews out pushing some debris off of roadways where they had been completely covered over. The next morning, we started out with two crews cleaning up with chippers and also scooping things out into dump trucks. The crew has been very receptive and forthcoming with adaptive ideas, and we quickly moved into a pickup, pluck, and haul type of method rather than chipping on-site. It sped things up a little bit and helped us get a little bit more of a foothold on it. As of today, we're just about to Arbor from the east side of town, north of Theodore towards Caton Farm. We also had a crew for a couple days going through Fox Meadow and the Manaco-Ardah area where there still remains quite a bit of debris, but they were able to make some strong headway into those areas as well. Tomorrow, we'll be back to two crews, at my last understanding, to go back into those areas and continue on. We are seeing some inflow from behind the crews. We're getting some more stuff coming out, and we'll be addressing those after we've been able to make a full round through town. Tomorrow's efforts will concentrate still in the Ward 2 area and also on the west side in some of those pocket subdivisions, including the privately maintained HOA areas as we get to those spots. Happy to answer any questions about that that you may have.
What are they doing with all this mess, Tom, when they get it?
We're loading it into the dump trucks, and then we take it to our dump site where we normally dump our excavation spoils.
I was watching them the other day, because, I mean, it's just, over by my house, it was a hot mess. Over by their houses, it's even worse. It's just unbelievable, the damage, and they were doing a very, very nice job. It's grueling. I mean, we had thirty-some-year-old trees that were humongous that were sucked out of the ground over there, literally, roots and all. It was unbelievable. Two of my neighbors had them fall on their houses, and I was out there all night long with a chainsaw helping them.
Yeah, and it's really about working well. The guys have been doggedly pursuing every task that we give them, and they're working through streets as quickly as possible.
It's grueling work. Tell them thank you.
It is. Thank you.
Yeah, I also, I called in the next day to your office to get our house or our street on the list, and I didn't get her name, but whoever answered the phone was just awesome, real congenial.
Nancy's been feeling a lot of calls from residents, so thank you for passing her.
And I can imagine that the phone was ringing off the book, but she was great.
They are. She's been receiving a lot of calls and questions, and we'll get to every, every house, every street as soon as we can. We're methodically making our way through and trying to address all the needs as we can as we go.
Well, thank you for all you're doing, because I know I've reached out to you many times, phone calls, texts, and emails, and thank you.
You're welcome.
We've been working extra hours. But I know I also reach out in regard to sign. If we cannot put it up, can at least we move it?
It's signed by Burger King.
The entry sign unlocking is still down?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. I have a couple of things. First, I want to thank you for getting a light on the viaduct, taking care of my Broadway there.
Glad to hear they got that.
I finally got that up. And number two, I know the crews have gone through, but after your crews went through, I've noticed that parts of Ward 1, ComEd finally got in, took care of some trees that were on lines and other, and they're just laying in the parkway now, so is our crew gonna take care of that, or is ComEd gonna take care of that?
Given what ComEd's facing and the spread of issues that they need to deal with, we'll go back through those areas that we've been through. I'm anticipating, you know, at least two runs to get through town. It's gonna be several more weeks. My initial estimate was a little optimistic, but I think we'll be going at this for a little while longer yet, and we'll go back through some of those areas where there's some debris that's come in behind us. All right, thanks. You're welcome.
Yeah, Tom, certainly appreciate all the work the guys have done, and thanks for the updates, too, the Facebook, that helps. You know, people think that they've gotten forgotten about and stuff like that, but now that we got communication, knowing that you're going from east to west, just to be patient, and then just the fact to do as much as you can as a homeowner, if there's some branches that you can cut up and just put with your regular yardways, I mean, that pays off. Me and a few of my neighbors did that just to make your life a little easier from coming through.
No, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, thanks, Tom.
Other than that, I just want to mention that the annual concrete replacement program is out to bid. We had Christopher Burke go through large sections of town and identify needs, and we have a bid packet at IDOT that I think just came through approval, and they'll be going out for that, and we look to have that program completed yet this year. It's around 4,900 linear feet of sidewalk and curb replacement, and we'll be getting that done as soon as we can.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to our community development department. Our community development director, Scott McMaster. Good evening, Scott.
Good evening, mayor and council. Just have one quick agenda item this evening, and that is for the release of letter of credit for Fuller's Car Wash. Public works and staff and community development confer with Robinson's assessment that the improvements made at that project were satisfied the release of the letter of credit, so we're looking to release that upon the transfer guarantee, project warranty.
So moved, as presented. We have motion by Alderman Albert, seconded by Alderman Frichay for the Fuller's Car Wash letter of credit. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Joe Kupel?
Yes.
Marco Cola di Pietro?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Barbara Scoler?
Yes.
John Frichay?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And then just a quick thank you to those who were able to make it out to Forza's Table and Tap this afternoon for the ribbon-cutting grand opening for that new restaurant in Crest Hill. As you know, a lot of restaurants are struggling, but this one's, this one's doing well, and they got good food, so if you have a chance, please make it out there, so thank you.
Yes, I just wanted to say, unfortunately, I'm unable to make these ribbon cuttings today during the day, but I'm glad to hear that it went well.
Any other questions?
Hey, Scott, you have to know that Fuller's Car Wash has plans to do like the monthly membership type program. Are they just gonna be, they pay for it once and yet?
Yeah, I don't know. I thought when we had initial conversations when they were coming here that they were going to do that, but, I mean, they're, they're a very simple, played-down version of themselves now, so a lot of the other locations that they have are gas stations and oil changes, but their model has changed, so I don't know if they're, I can certainly reach out to them and ask.
Yeah, maybe, maybe just ask them. I actually like, I really like the car wash.
Sure.
They, it does a very good job compared to some of the other automatic ones.
Absolutely, yep.
And love they keep it clean, too, did you notice?
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Scott.
Good evening.
Moving on to police department, our police chief, Ed Clark. Good evening, guys.
Good evening, mayor and council. I do not have anything on the agenda this evening, but I'd be willing to entertain any questions.
Questions of the police chief. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor's report. The, my agenda item was taken care of with the GFOA award. Just a couple follow-ups in regards to public works. My heartfelt gratitude and thanks to all the members of the public works department, our police department. I will say that I was very impressed within a half hour of the end of the storm on Monday evening, last Monday. Public Works, Public Works was out in the entire city, removing many trees that were blocking the roadways, pushing them off the roadway, cutting them off the roadway to make all the roads passable, and then first thing Tuesday morning, they were out there working down on the east end of town where we got hit the hardest out of all the areas, starting with the chipping and the cutting and the removing of the trees. Now, I will say that from my estimations, we are probably, when I look around and see how many branches and trees are down and in the parkway, we're probably between 2,500 and 3,000 out there, I would say. So we're probably about half of the city got hit, and I know that everybody wants to be first, but unfortunately, that's not the way it works. I know all during my radio interviews and my newspaper interviews, I made the comment that we just need to be a little patient, that it's gonna take some time, that with that amount of trees, and this is the worst that I've seen this city since our tornado in 1990. Now, in 1990, we had more structural damage, we had more loss of life, we had more buildings that were demolished and destroyed. This time, we only had the one, a few of the buildings, the main one was on Arbor Lane when the section of the roof was blown off, 1,800 Arbor, but luckily, nobody was injured, and the building department had to displace 10 families out of that building. I know that a lot of roofs, shingles were blown off many, many roofs. There were some structural damage down on the east end of town when the, when the trees fell. And again, because the older section of town has the overhead power lines, you know, when the trees fall and they knock down the wires, that makes it more difficult for Commonwealth Edison. It's more of a specialized field. They have to bring in the tree trimmers first to get the trees off, the lines to be able to replace those. So I know the same thing with the, with the power. At our peak, we were between 3,300 and 3,500 homes that were without, homes and businesses that were without power on, after the storm on Monday. I was on a conference call with several other mayors at 10:30 PM on Monday night. Commonwealth Edison was estimating about 800,000 people were out in northern Illinois. That was probably one of the worst storms that ever hit their, their ability also, and unfortunately, a lot of their crews were on the east coast dealing with the hurricane, so when they came back, they brought additional help from the east coast, and I believe everybody was restored in Crest Hill by Saturday evening around 7:00 PM. So, you know, the city certainly doesn't control where Commonwealth Edison goes. They, I would say that our government representative kept us informed the whole way along of the outages and the percentages that they were taking care of. It's just a slow process. It's a slow process for all the communities that were hit, and most of the communities around us have the same problems. I know that Joliet still have areas that is out also. So whether you like the fact that your power came on quickly or it didn't come on quickly, I think the Commonwealth Edison had an enormous problem in front of them, and to service that many people in five days, I know some people are gonna disagree, but, you know, it's not like they were sitting idly. If you look by Hillcrest Shopping Center, you see the command center there, you see all the trucks parked there. There are several trucks from out of the, out of Illinois that come to help us. So, you know, the good, the good thing is that we did not have any loss of life. The downed trees will be removed. Please be patient with us. You know, we're gonna, we're gonna take it away. We're gonna, we're gonna clean this all up. I thought it was gonna be about two weeks. Also, it may be three weeks, may even be a little bit longer than that, but I know they're working 10-hour days. I know they're working overtime. They're working on Saturdays also, so just be patient with you. Leave them there, we will come and get them, and everything will be taken care of. But hats off to public works because they did a fantastic job. Police department did a fantastic job, and it was difficult even for us here at city hall. We were without power until Thursday afternoon at 4:30. And so it was challenging for everybody. I guess we take electricity for granted, and when it comes back, you know, everybody's happy, so. The other thing that I just wanted to make comment, the census takers are out in the area. They are going door-to-door. Please cooperate with them. Again, it's very important for municipality to get an accurate count for the census, so when they do knock on the door, please, please take the five minutes or fill it out online or mail in the hard copy that you have at home. With that, any questions of the mayor? I'll try to answer them. Hearing none, we'll move on to our city clerk, Vicki Hackney. Good evening, Beck.
Good evening, mayor and council. I have no agenda items this evening. Just to piggyback on Ray with the power, thank you to all the residents who were so patient. We didn't have power here for a couple days, and Jan and Mary Bell were answering the phone as quick as they could. I know probably there were some missed calls, but between no power and tree questions, they tried to take care as best they could, so thank you to all the residents for your patience with that, and thank you to both of them. It was a little warm in here when I stepped in here, so I was offering like cold water or anything they could use, but thank you again. Also, citywide garage sales, we did have 40 citywide garage sales. I did go by a few just to see and it looked like at least people were out and about, so that's great. Individuals are still entitled to have another garage sale this year on their own if they haven't had their two themselves, so just so they're aware of that. And thank you to the police department, just so residents are aware, there are people out there that are trying to solicit for work that don't have a permit. We had someone by our neighborhood, and the police were out there immediately to take care of it, so I don't want anybody taking for granted elderly that can't make that decision, but the police were there within probably five minutes, so. And that was without emergency call. That was, I didn't say my name, so. But thank you to that, and that's all I have. Any questions or clerks out there, I'd be happy to answer.
I do want to make a comment. I came down to bring my packet that day, and I thought I'd stay around for a little while and watch, and I have to commend Jan and Mary Bell because that phone never stopped ringing.
It was a little insane.
I mean, it literally never stopped ringing. As soon as they hung up, it rang again. It was just unbelievable, boom, 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 and there was nothing I could do, you know, it sounded like I couldn't answer the phones, and it was very warm in there, so, great day.
Thank you.
And please pass that along. And please pass that along.
I will, thank you.
Okay, thanks Vicki.
Thank you Ray.
And one thing I did forget to mention was our garbage collector, Republic Services. We did do the extra pickup on Friday. Kudos to Heather handled a lot of that from an administrative side. We offered a second pickup for the week on Friday for basically for Monday's pickup and Tuesday's pickup, because at that point in time, we knew that a lot of the power was still out in the area, so a lot of the food was starting to spoil, so they were given the opportunity to have a second pickup and throw the food away. Other people throughout the city also took advantage of it. We had 164 customers take advantage of the second day pickup, so thanks for the cooperation of Republic Services, Allied Waste for cooperating with us and making that second pickup to get the spoiled food away from the people's homes. Moving on to the city treasurer Glenn Conklin, good evening Glenn.
Good evening mayor and council. First off, I'd like to thank Ashley for a great job in achieving our fifth year of the GFOA award. I want to thank mayor and council for always supporting that. I'd like to personally thank Nick Narducci who brought that to us initially and for his guidance and leadership and getting us rolling with that, and I'd be wrong if I didn't give a big thank you to Lindsay and Regina for their fine work in the office. I'd like, excuse me, and Kim, excuse me, I'm sorry, I get nervous, I'm not good with this. I'd like to report regular overtime payroll from July 20th, 2020 through August 2nd of 2020, the amount of $226,718.19. I seek your approval on our list of bills, which for that same timeframe totals $1,547,474.52.
So moved, just presented.
Thank you.
Motion by Alderman Oberlin, seconded by Alderman Sclaire for the approval of the list of bills, questions or comments? Roll call please.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
John Boucher?
Yes.
Clade Gazal?
Yes.
Marco Coli-Pietro?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kubal?
Yes.
Barbara Sclaire?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I thank you all, answer any questions if I can.
Questions of city treasurer. Thank you Glenn. Unfinished business, we have nothing on the agenda, anybody? New business, anyone? Committee liaison reports. Anyone? City council comments, positive city council comments, anything you'd like to share with your constituents? We'll begin with Ward 1 this evening, Alderman Boucher.
Nothing this time.
Alderman Dyke?
Just want to thank again public works for all their work they're doing, and thanks again to the treasurer's department for all they do for our finances.
Ward 2, Alderman Sclaire?
Yes, I just want to second both things that Scott said. Thank you.
Alderman Gazal?
I just want to wish well to the high schoolers, they started school today, e-learning, and to all the other grade schools that'll be starting two weeks from today. I listened to some of the conversations with my daughter and her friends and how they're fury, you know, it's, let's encourage our kids. This is going to be something new, e-learning, they feel the fear of not going to school, not meeting their teachers, so this is a town where we have to give them as much possible support and encourage them, and I want to welcome Forza again on the grand opening today. Thank you.
Ward 3, Alderman Oberlin?
Well, I want to thank Ada for giving me a nice tour of the new facility when I stopped down there on my day off, and Brian Semplinsky who showed me a lot of things on his computer when I was down there and explained a lot of things down there to me. I appreciate them going extra to give me that, so thank them for me, okay?
Alderman Coli-Pietro?
I'd just like to say thank you to all the city staff for working through all the adversity in the past couple weeks here.
Ward 4, Alderman Albert?
Yeah, again, thanks to Tom and his department for the great work that they're doing, and also mayor, I know last meeting, I apologize for not being here, but you had a moment of silence for former Alderman Don Tomich, and I just wanted to say a few comments, you know, when I first got elected, Don was my partner there in Ward 4, and I appreciated working with him and really want to give my condolences to Shugie, Don, and Dean and the rest of the Tomich family and their loss.
Alderman Kubal?
Tom, also thank you for everything public works did there with the storm last Monday, and the drive-in is coming to Crest Hill again, for those that don't know that. On August 28th, over at Hazard Park, Crest Hill will have its second drive-in this summer. Grease will be on the screen, so.
The movie.
I believe it's $5 for a car loan, and that's all I have, Ray.
Okay, thank you. Public comment, anyone wishing to address city council, please step to the podium, state your name for the record, your address is optional. Was there any, is there anyone else? Okay. Let the record show that no one has approached the podium. To our city administrators, there are a need for an executive session.
Yes sir, as mayor, under 2C-11 for litigation and 2C-1 for personnel.
Motion would be in order?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Oberlin, seconded by Alderman Coli-Pietro for an executive session. Roll call please.
Joe Kubal?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
John Boucher?
Yes.
Barbara Sclaire?
Yes.
Clade Gazal?
Yes.
Marco Coli-Pietro?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, we'll be going into executive session at 7:30, 6:00 PM. The department heads, you are excused. Good night.
Good night.
Okay, motion would be in order to resume regular session?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Oberlin, seconded by Alderman Coli-Pietro to resume regular session at 9:12 PM. Roll call please.
Joe Kubal?
Yes.
Nate Albert?[1751.20]